Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the first study session on the city budget for June 3, 2008. May we have a roll call?
Council members.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Yusefian. Mayor Drayman. Mayor Protem Weaver.
Here. Mayor's on his way, caught in traffic, maybe the traffic signals aren't sequencing properly unless he's on the freeway and then we all know what's happened to him. Anyway, we're starting close to nine and a half hour late and we will end at 11:30 unless the mayor wants to go longer. So, start by, I guess we turn to you for starters.
Good morning, Mayor Protem, Mr. Weaver, members of the City Council. This morning, I think is your fourth study session focusing on the upcoming fiscal year's budget and in particular looking at strategies for closing what is a predicted budget gap in the general fund in the neighborhood of $10 million. At your last study session, study session number three, you reviewed a number of strategies recommended by me for closing the gap, the foundation of which is a 5% reduction in the various operating departments of the general fund and we spent considerable time having each department go through each of their recommendations on how if they needed to reduce their costs by 5%, they would propose doing that. A number of comments were made in that study session by various council members concerned about the implications of reductions in various departments, most notably fire and police, and interest in seeing some increases in one or two other operational areas. With that, your staff and I spent considerable time since that council meeting looking at the budget gap and trying to find additional ways that we could either make resources available for you to consider reducing the amount of cuts that might be implemented and are looking for other ways to... and are looking for other ways to reduce costs, increase resources, and on the whole, close the predicted budget gap. Our purpose today is to take you through that work, and then, most importantly, to receive from you direction on how you would like us to proceed to implement strategies for balancing the budget for the upcoming year. We have a little less than a couple of weeks before the public hearing, and of course, you're obligated to have a budget adopted by the end of June, so we have just a month to finish our work here. With that, let me turn to Bill Fox, who will take you through the work that we've done since your last study session.
Mr. Fox, do you want us to hold questions till you're done, or interrupt you? I would think, in order to get through the material today, why don't we go ahead and do the presentation, and then we can go back through and pick up any questions.
Good, no questions.
Let me interrupt Bill here for a second. You have a number of PowerPoint slides, but the core presentation is about eight slides, and on slide number eight, if you fast forward through your printed packet, you'll see there's slide number eight says, "Needed City Council Policy Direction Regarding Strategy Incorporating Program Reductions." Again, based on last week's study session, a number of you expressed concerns about proceeding with the strategies that would reduce, in particular, the fire and police operations. We, at this point, need to have direction from the council on how we're going to proceed to put this budget together. If indeed, we're not going to be implementing those cost strategy, cost reduction strategies, we have a tremendous amount of work to do to backfill those potential reductions, because they amount to about $4.5 million of the roughly $8.2 million reduction program that it takes to balance this budget. And if indeed, that's your direction, again, we have to look to other alternatives for balancing this budget. So, today, the cornerstone of what we need to do is get to the point of having the council tell us whether or not you're willing to support those program reductions as a means of balancing the budget, or whether there are other strategies we need to put in place to do that.
Thank you for prioritizing by dollar amount. That's very evident.
Yeah, we've given you several handouts, and once we get through the eight slides, then we'll quickly review the handouts that we've given you and the information that I think will be valuable for your discussion today.
Okay.
Sorry, Bill, go ahead.
No problem. I'd like to first say that as we ended session three last week, we came in with $167,000, $167,300,000 in revenues and expenses of $165,300,000, which built in a program capacity of $2 million. So, in other words, there was an initial $2 million for programming purposes. Since that time, staff has gone back, and we've done some additional analysis, and there's three major areas that we did analysis. First is, we took a look at the vacant position list, and through that process, we were able to identify 11 positions, amounting to slightly over $900,000, that deemed to be those that could be given up as part of the overall budget reduction strategy. The second area is, we found that there were some additional expenses that should have been included in the initial budget submittals of approximately $1.2 million, which we consider unavoidable, and we'll share with you more today why we need to include these in the budget. And thirdly, in our last session, we had some budget revenue increases that we considered potential budget revenue increases. We've gone back and done some additional analysis, and determined that these could be included in the budget, some of which will require council action, others will not. As a result of the work, there's an additional $300,000 in programming capacity, bringing us up to $2.3 million, which is available for discussion today. This next slide takes us back, and is basically a recap of where we were last time we met, which shows that we had an $8.2 million departmental reduction strategy in place, which resulted in a 5% overall budget reduction in the general fund. Now, we've highlighted six different departments in which questions were posed by council, and there seemed to be some level of support, where maybe the reductions that were proposed by the departments may come into question, and we will need to investigate further, and a final determination needs to be made. This next slide is to basically take you into a general overfund review of where we're at and where we think we're going to be going. First off, the forecast, as you're going from left to right, forecast to 2007-8 is where we believe we'll be at the end of the year, and we will have a net change in our fund balance of $3.5 million to the good, prior to one-time transfers, both to CIP and to the liability fund. At the end of the year, our reserve percent will be 31% as we've projected today. In our first budget session that we met with you, we came in and indicated that there would be a $9.9 million shortfall, prior to doing any of the analysis, which we've now come up with a positive programming capacity. But our initial forecast showed that we were going to be 9.9, prior to the work that's been done. Our most recent revised forecast brings us up to the $2.3 million programming capacity that we talked about. Again, revenues are exceeding the expenses by $2.3 million. It brings our reserve percentage up to 32%. This next slide shows what our initial submittal was for the total general fund expenses by the various departments, and, as you can see, public safety between the police and fire department add up to $94.1 million of the $174.6 million in the general fund. This equates to 53% of the general fund budget. To date, the departments have submitted a 5% overall budget reduction strategy, which equated to the $8.2 million in savings that have been identified. In the discussions from our last budget study session, there had been suggestions to reduce the police department down to a 1.2% budget reduction strategy, and the fire department down to a 2.7% reduction strategy, and the impact of reducing the budget reductions to those two particular departments will result in the other departments collectively having to come up with a 9% overall budget reduction strategy, in order for us to reach the $8.2 million. And if the direction is that we don't have any reduction in the police and fire departments, then ultimately, that will cause all the other departments collectively to have to burden 11% in order to close the $8.2 million gap. We've reached the point here that we, before proceeding any further, we wanted to get some council input and suggestions and guidance on how we best go through the remaining part of the process.
Let me add here, we have provided with you in the subsequent slides, and we can certainly touch on any of those you wish. The detail by department that you had at your last meeting, we provided you with several additional handouts, and Bill, why don't we touch quickly on what those handouts are that we gave out this morning?
Yes, Mr. Starbird, one of the handouts that was requested by Councilman Yusefian was the vacant position summary analysis. We've provided that here. In this particular document, we're showing those that have already been recommended for reduction by the departments, those that are possible additional candidates, and those that the departments feel are necessary for ongoing operations. Another schedule that we provided is the transfers from the general fund and the CIP fund. We're showing the various transfers going back from 2005, '06, going on forward to the years 2016, '17, so you can have an idea of the impact on an ongoing basis. We did an analysis called the General Fund Department Reductions, and this relates to the impact, if there's lesser reductions in the police and fire department, how that will impact the ongoing operations of the other departments. Mr. Weaver had requested a list of all the reductions in dollar sequence going from high to low. We've provided that, and at this point, there may be other handouts, but I don't seem to have any additional ones.
No, the breakdown by department, too, is very good, so that helps, too. Maybe even more than the one I originally asked for, so...
Yeah, we did that both ways. We did exactly what you asked for, which is the reduction in the miracle order, but you need to note, for example, the very first one, police, which is the largest cops problem-oriented policing, there are actually six sworn bodies involved in that number, so it's conceivable you could have a variation on a theme. You could eliminate the entire program, or you could do less than eliminating the entire program, and maybe it's three bodies, or two bodies, or one body, or what have you.
Again, it's to give direction to you.
Right.
So, you can analyze what the impact, we went from six to three.
Right.
With that, do, I mean, there's a lot to absorb, read all these charts right here and now, and accurately give you a...
Actually, today, Michelle Flynn is sitting up front across from the city clerk, and in the event that we do some scenario analysis, we'll be able to keep a running total for you, and we can make a determination on how we want to address the gap.
Well, if you cut the cops program from six to three, she can't analyze the impacts. Their staff will get up, and they'll be able to tell us exactly what will happen if you go from like six to three.
Councilman Weaver, you're exactly correct. What we would do is, in collaboration with the police department, we would work with them...
I'm glad they have time for this.
And then we could make a determination.
Okay, well, I'll be sent public safety's first. Me, if you don't have public safety, you don't have, you don't have a city. Public safety, to me, trans, goes from not just in police and fire, but over into public works and water and power. There's components within all of those that fall under, for me, safety.
Councilman Weaver, I'd like to make a suggestion for the rest of the council.
Sure.
Probably to help go through this process, I would make a suggestion that maybe the police department come up, and we could revisit their presentation from last week, so that we have a basis from which to start.
Since they're the biggest one, I'd as well start. Is the chief here?
The chief is here. Randy, why don't you come up? Mr. Weaver, if I can, we have focused in particular on police and fire, because various councilman's comments last week were along the lines of not wanting to see any reductions in those programs. A couple of editorial comments on my part, the program reductions presented aren't reductions that any of your department staff would want to implement.
Agreed.
And I think what's pointing, in fact, to the contrary, Chief Adams had presented as part of his initial budget this year, a request for a downtown policing unit, which would have been a number of additional police officers. So, contrary to reducing sworn officers, the police department, like the other departments, has needs in the community they would like to begin to address. The chief would like to add additional police officers to the force. So, we find ourselves in the inevitable position of having to recommend program reductions at a time that this community is really requiring and demanding more and more services, at a time when there's development downtown and throughout the community, and frankly, things are going very well for Glendale, we find ourselves with a budget that structurally isn't able to support the request for services that we have. Long term, we have to address that issue. Looking each year incrementally at a budget that structurally has resources that don't keep pace with inflation, and do not keep pace with the level of requests by the community, puts us in this kind of a situation, where instead of being able to enhance services, we're in a mode of having to talk to you about cutting services. And in the long term, that's not in the best interest of the community.
I don't think that's lost on any of us up here. We don't like to make these cuts either. Sometimes, though, I'd like you to refresh, not necessarily today, refresh the community. Decades ago, when they had portioned out how much property tax, percentage-wise, the cities get back, we got one of the lowest percentages back over our surrounding cities, because we were so efficient, and in such a good position, that we, in essence, hurt ourselves. What do we get, 12, 13?
About 13, 14 cents on the dollar.
And our neighbors get more than that.
As high as 23 and 24%.
So, we're hurt right off the bat, in terms of revenue in, and then we have, you look at the Cosmont report, people in the city pay less for what they get than in most cities. So, we're structurally out of sync. The people want all the services, they're going to be having to, that council, to look at ways to increase the revenue.
Right.
Or do what you said, eliminate services we're already providing.
Well, Mr. Weaver, as you know, as you've just described, Glendale has, for decades, prided itself on being a low-cost city both to do business in as well as to reside in. For decades and decades, we bragged about not having any assessment fees, not having any impact fees, not having a business license tax, and we relied on other revenue sources to support our general fund. The problem is, in the past 20 years, we've seen the demographics and the character of Glendale change significantly, and yet, we haven't had a revenue structure that has kept pace with that. And the state, and the voters in the state, have continued to place more and more restrictions on cities as to what councils can unilaterally implement, so that you have far fewer options for increasing revenues than you had before. Glendale is very much an urban community with a very high level of quality and expectations on behalf of the businesses and the residents who live here. We are envied by other communities. It's a high-quality community, high level of service, good infrastructure, and yet, a relatively low revenue base, if you compare us with other communities. We have, though, had the benefit of being able to rely on a very broad breadth of enterprise activities that support the general fund, the GWP transfer being one of those. And as a result, we've been able to rely on those sources of revenues to support the general fund, and as a result, the council has not, over the years, had to implement other means of raising revenues. Well, in an era when GWP and other enterprise funds are facing tremendous pressures out there, then that puts pressure on things like rates, and that puts pressure on transfers, and that causes us to look to ways that we can reduce the general fund's dependence on those sources of revenue, and that means, if you're going to provide a level of services and maintain the quality of community we have here, we have to begin to look to the kinds of typical resources other communities have turned to since 1978, when Proposition 13 passed.
That's a message...
And we've avoided that.
That's a message I'm trying to send out to the public, that we are going to have to do some serious looks at our revenue stream. We already are doing that on the expenditure side, but you get what you pay for, and if you want all these services, you're going to obviously pay more.
And as Chief Adams so aptly noted at the most recent staff meeting, where we continued to work on this challenge, we are way beyond cutting fat, as many would like to think. If you just cut the fat, which means some program or service that I don't need, but one person's fat is another person's necessary service, we are way past cutting fat in this budget, and we're into cutting muscle in this budget. When you have important programs like the cops programs, SRO and the middle schools, and those sorts of programs now having to be looked at for reductions, that's really getting into a lot of the meat of the police department. The same thing applies to the programs in all of the other departments, whether it's libraries, parks and wrecks, planning, or the fire department. These are tough decisions.
Sorry, Chief, for taking your time, but you can start any time now.
Mayor Protem Weaver and Honorable Counsel, as Mr. Starbird was saying, this is a pretty painful exercise, because we are really cutting into the core muscle of the police department. Even on that vacant position list, those positions that are listed there for reductions mean reductions on things that we're doing in the police department. Those are areas that we have held those vacant positions open, based upon the reductions that we needed to do in the last two-year budget cycle, and weren't able to fill them at that time. So, if we cut those out of the organization, some of the things that we had in mind to do with those positions won't be able to be done. What we've tried to do at the police department in looking at reductions is divide all of our services, and we've done this consistently over the last five years that I've been here. We've divided our services into essential, proactive, and community-based areas. The community-based actually lists the discretionary services. The center area, the proactive, is our priority services, and then the essential ones are our core mission that we couldn't do without. It's what we're all about. I would like to say to you, though, that I think as you begin to consider these different areas, you begin to slowly dismantle your police department. It's really what you're doing. Because if you were to cut all your community-based discretionary programs out of your department, you're going to dismantle some very important programs, some programs that feed a lot of the other things that you do on the department. And it's not without reductions of sworn personnel, and at a time where... And at a time where the city is growing, the thought of reducing a very leanly-staffed police department is, I think, at best problematic. I don't know how you build a city and increase the size of the city and decrease the size of the infrastructure when you're already very leanly-staffed. We're at a point, I think, where with the growth occurring in the downtown area, and that's why we've come before you with a proposal to form this and increase the size of our downtown policing unit, that we need to be growing the police department rather than dismantling. But be that as it may, if we go ahead with a 5% reduction, we will eliminate our school resource officers in the middle schools, and again, I probably don't have to tell all of you what that means as far as having police officers be mentors to the youth of our community, and hopefully encourage them to consider a public safety career and have that type of connection to the police department. A lot of those other programs, PAL, Explorers, you know, the STAR program, Citizens Academy, those types of programs are all connections to the community, where, again, we kind of reach out to the community to form partnerships, which I think help not only recruit people into the police department, but also provide that connection and that partnership with the community that creates additional eyes and ears for us out there, helping us be more effective. Some of those other programs listed on there, like HIDA, TRAP, and so forth, if those positions are cut, and those are officers that are actually assigned out into grant-funded or partially revenue-generating positions on task forces, for instance, the officer assigned to TRAP is actually paid for by part of the money that we pay in our DMV taxes every year. We pay an extra dollar to fund TRAP, and so we are actually getting full replacement of that person if we cut that particular program. But again, it's discretionary, we don't have to be involved in that. Same thing with the alarms program. If we cut that, the revenue that we're generating in by actually going out to the community and trying to have a program where we don't have officers responding to false alarms, or if we do, those that are responsible for those false alarms help pay for that, those types of programs would be cut. Cops is basically about, in my opinion, fixing the broken windows in your community so that they don't become the major problems in your community.
That's what I want you to expand on. If you just took the cops program-oriented and the full-service, that's 10 sworn officers that we have on the sheet here. Would that mean the elimination of those positions from the police department?
For all intents and purposes, cops right now is kind of wounded, if you will, and what I mean by that is, we haven't been able to fully staff cops since I've been here. This would kind of phase it out in almost its entirety, and certainly the full-service aspect of it. And so the officers assigned at the geographic areas of town, that when we develop a special problem in that particular area of town, go out and try to marshal all the city resources to impact that issue and that problem, our ability to do that would be significantly crippled, because we wouldn't have the people that are assigned in there that know that area of the city day in and day out, and really have the time, because they're not responding to every call for service that's coming in, to actually work and trying to marshal all the city resources to direct the problem.
Since those two are the biggest, the cops program is the biggest funded ones that are listed, just how serious do you consider that? If we sat here and said eliminate them, what do you think is the gravity of the situation? Public may know, they've heard the word cops. They do, but just how significant is that, about one and a half million?
Well, I think, Mayor Protem Weaver, I think what is happening is, you begin to cut more and more discretionary programs out of your budget, you begin to have your city become more and more like a city that is totally reactive, and isn't proactive in addressing issues and problems. Meaning that as we cut more and more programs out of our budget, we will simply become a police department that responds to calls for services that come in, and pretty soon, we will begin to prioritize those calls for service that come in, and begin to tell the public, we can't respond to those minor calls for service. Similar to what, and, you know, I don't mean to say something negative about Los Angeles, but there's certain calls for service in Los Angeles where if you call, you don't get a police officer. And the reason is, is because they feel that they don't have the resources available to respond to those calls for service. In our city, you call a police officer, you get a police officer. And the unfortunate part is, as we get larger and larger, if we don't keep pace with the level of calls for service, what will happen is the delay of time that it will take to get out to a nonessential call for service will significantly increase.
Let me put it this another way. The cops are police officers on the campuses, right? A lot of it?
Actually, those were, the police officers on campus are school resource officers.
All paid for by school. So the cop...
No, no, the school resource officers, the...
Okay, I understand the school resource, but the cops, where do they, where are they situated?
They actually work out in the different areas.
Like down in Adams Square or up there?
Right.
So in essence, you're saying you will be taking them out of those areas?
Right.
And if the calls are coming in, then we would have to react from somewhere other than being in the community and knowing the community and what's happening there.
Then the normal officers that are assigned, we deploy officers in beats throughout the city, and certainly when calls for service come in, we respond to those calls for service.
I'm trying to get the, I'm trying to get the public to understand, if you cut the program, how much potential damage you're doing in those communities?
Our cops officers actually work full-time on different problems that exist in different neighborhoods. If you, say, spot a, let's say, an apartment complex that's dealing drugs and having issues and so forth, a cops officer that goes in there will work on trying to bring all, marshal all the resources to change the environment so that that problem in that area of the city is eradicated, and we don't have ongoing calls for service. That's the whole idea behind a community-oriented problem-solving unit.
Mr. Contero, Mr. Yusefian.
Well, for myself, I think the cops unit is one of the most effective programs that Glendale PD has. I get to know the, I know most of the individual officers, and there's no substitute for someone that knows a neighborhood like the back of his or her hand, that knows where cars are parked, what apartments are constantly asking for service, and just knows the general makeup. So this is going to be one of the last things I'll be interested in cutting, because I just think it's very effective policing. I mean, LAPD is in cars, and as you know, that started when? In the 1940s, I guess, when they went to the whole motorized concept rather than cops on a beat? But I just think we need to hold on to our cops unit. So, I mean, I would go for maintaining what we have currently. Maybe we can't increase it, but at least let's keep the current cops program as it stands. Then the SROs, I might be a little more flexible on that issue. We have two SROs in each high school, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so maybe there could be some rotation to try to have some influence in the middle schools as far as the SROs, meaning that one of the cops could occasionally go to a junior high. I'm not excited about it, but I'm willing to give it up. Certainly 108,000 for the cops TV program, I would cut that. I think the community-family counseling is very important. All of the interactions I've had with that program throughout the year has been very positive. The PAL program, I think, should continue to stay in existence. I mean, it's only 55,000, and I think it does a very good job of getting young people involved in positive activities. The same with the STAR program, that's only 26,000. Same way, we have people, young kids that come here with their families that have been on the STAR program for years. I think that's very effective. One of the questions that was asked last week was the Explorers, in terms of how many of these Explorers eventually went on to become police officers. I'd like to maybe get a number on the Explorers program. The police academy, I think we could get rid of that, the Citizens Police Academy. Same with the Citizens Public Safety Academy. But the cops unit, I think we should continue to fund it in the, you know, the same amount of officers that we have currently. That's where I'm at on the different, on the different possibilities.
Mr. Yusefian.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning.
You kind of missed the excitement last week, so now you're on the other side this week, dealing with this. I want to thank staff for providing all the lists, by the way. Appreciate that very much. Couple of items, I have a question. On the list of general, I mean, on the list of vacancies, it's showing that there's currently five cops vacant. Is that accurate? Somebody tell me that?
COPS or COPPS?
No, it's COP.
Because there's...
No, no, no.
Because we're using it.
No, cop program. It basically says, "Community Service Officers." That's the cops program, correct, Councilman?
Yes, we've been holding some of those positions open.
No, if I can, Mr. Yusefian is reading the General Fund vacant position summary. On that summary, a community service officer is a CSO, that's not a sworn position. You see there that there are seven, there are seven recruit positions. Those are essentially entry-level police officer positions. They come on as recruits, complete their training, then move in as full-time police officers.
So where is the, so right now, we have 10 officers that are all in the cops program?
No, because, Councilman, you're saying...
So where is the vacant, vacant positions in this list?
There are seven vacant positions. They're referenced as police officer recruits, but they essentially are police officer positions that we would need to fill, and they get filled essentially by bringing people into the bottom end of patrol as recruits, they become police officers, and then people move up and fill these other vacancies. So there are, is that correct, Bill?
Okay, so somebody let me know. How many, you're supposed to have 10. There is six and four positions, that's 10, right, in the program? How many warm bodies in that 10 positions currently?
Currently, we have three officer positions staffed in cops.
Three.
And the cops unit, that's correct.
And what is it?
The cops unit is carrying the majority of our officer vacancies.
And what is those three positions? Are they all police officers?
That is correct.
There's no captains, there's no lieutenants, there's nothing? They just, I think Mr. Nicolaisen, Captain Nicolaisen, his cops unit is under his purview?
In Support Services Division, that's correct. And the Community Services Bureau is under the command of Lieutenant Montalvo.
Okay, so those two individuals oversee these three police officers?
That's correct.
Right now? So you have seven vacancies in that place right now? How long have you had those seven vacancies?
Well, it's, it's been at seven probably for a month or two, largely due to the need to move people through the academy and field training, and then into our essential positions of patrol and investigations.
What was it last year?
I think last year, we probably carried about three to four vacancies there.
In the cops unit?
That's correct. Part of that was, our last budget cycle, our contribution to the cost savings was to hold positions vacant, and as a result, obviously, we're going to hold them in positions, hopefully, outside of essential service, which is our patrol response and criminal investigations and traffic.
Councilman Yusefian, what, every police department's always going to have certain number of positions that are in transition, that our officers, when officers retire, when they leave the department, when they go other places. Most of the time, police departments carry those vacant positions in patrol, which then affects the ability to deliver essential services to the community. We have elected to carry some of those vacant positions in our cops area. That doesn't mean that cops isn't important, that just goes along with our philosophy that that's a discretionary unit, and so if we're going to be vacant somewhere, we've carried those vacancies there rather than in patrol.
So what you do is, when you have vacancies in patrol, you will go out there and take officers from cops unit, put it back into the patrol to make sure that patrol is 100% full.
That is correct.
And then you just leave those positions vacant. So that's what I was trying to understand, because one of my colleagues says he was fine with keeping the current number, and I wanted to know what the current number of warm bodies are there, because phantom people don't do work. If they did, it would be fantastic, we'd just put 10,000 police officers here, we'd be done. So what I was trying to understand is, from last year to this year, what the difference was? And so this way, I can justify not, you know, manning those individuals, because there is not that big of a difference. So that's what I was trying to get to. So you're telling me it's probably about five positions that were vacant?
That's correct.
There are, throughout the department, there are seven vacancies currently.
That's correct.
So if these programs were cut, and that would entail total number of bodies in those two programs, nine?
10.
10?
Well, it's more than 10, because there is, there is six sworn for the cops program, and then there is two in juvenile investigation.
I was just talking about cops.
Yeah.
In the cops total program, there's 10. There are only seven vacancies in the department.
So you have to let three people go?
So if we eliminate these programs, well, you'd have to let them go, or we'd absorb them in the course of the year as vacancies become open. The same with the other positions. I mean, these literally would eliminate, all of the police department positions would eliminate 10, 13, at least 12 positions. That's five more than we have current vacancies.
Mr. Mayor, then that goes to what Mr. Yusefian's leading up to. If, instead of the 10, we sent, what would happen if you had five? If some of the bodies weren't there a year ago, and then, and we cut back to the level that our real, live, warm bodies out there, like last year, maintaining the status quo, we're not helping you at all on what you consider a very important area to cover. But you see where...
Councilman Weaver, if the situation were ideal, and we weren't trying to help the city economize and save money and so forth, one of the things that we've talked about in the past is having 10 overage positions to help account for the two-year lag time from the time that you lose a police officer until you recruit, hire, train, and get that officer back pulling their own weight on the street. It's a year to a two-year period of time. That definitely impacts your service delivery in and of itself. For instance, we have seven officers right now, or seven recruits that are in the academy that will become officers in addition to the seven vacancies. Well, those seven that are in the academy are in that two-year queue period of time before they're actually going to be able to pull their weight. So you're always going to have some positions that are vacant on your department unless you're able to fill, say, 10 overages on the department, to always keep your authorized strength really to the ultimate level of where ideally it ought to be.
I may continue, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. In my, this is my opinion, and my opinion only. Considering that there is five vacancies, don't get me wrong, I don't think that the cops program is not a good program, I think it's an excellent program. I agree with Mr. Contero's words. It is, in my opinion, I think it's more important than a police officer in a car, to be honest with you. I'll tell you that right off the bat, because they solve a lot of problems before they become problems, so you don't have to send a police officer in a car. So, but I also have to balance a budget, and I understand what the chief is saying. When times were good, it's more than happy to vote for $10 million from the reserves, hire 25 more officers, and more personnel, and so on and so forth. But that was then, and I'm looking at a different ballgame today. My opinion, we should keep six warm bodies. Warm bodies, not just positions that we just rob every day and put somewhere else. There should be six sworn officers sitting there in the cops program. I like, you know, I will give you the discretion of not hiring those four, and wait until we see how we go later on. The rest of the stuff, I'm pretty much where Mr. Contero is in, as far as the SROs in the middle schools, maybe some of those SROs from high school can go and visit the middle school, especially in Toll, you know, Hoover, it's like they cross the street from each other, it's much easier to do that. TV program, I would say, while it's very nice, very informational, when you're short of money, those are the fringes you basically cut. If I'm short of money, I'm going to cut Charter, that will be the first thing I'll cut. Probably they just turned off my cable TV today. Probably they just turned off my, my cable TV today. Uh, the other thing I would do is, let me ask you a couple of questions. While PAL and STAR are very good programs, what happens if we transfer them to Parks and Recreation? Because those positions, the cost, that cost is basically overtime. You're paying overtime for a police officer to go and stand and do that. Wouldn't it be easier for us to keep the programs, but have some cost savings of transferring it to a different department, and have the program done by people who don't get paid as much as a police officer, and possibly not with overtime, and just maybe have a police officer to go there once in a blue moon? Uh, there'll be a little cost, but it won't be as much. Is that a possibility?
Well, Councilman Yusefian, that certainly is an option and could occur. A lot of those programs are successful because of the officers assigned to those programs who have a passion for those particular programs. And yes, they are funded on an overtime basis. Now, could the programs be switched to Parks and Rec, and, uh, some lesser-paid individual promote and move the program along? Uh, that's, that's a possibility. If we're going to have people drop in and so forth, there potentially could be an expense to that as, as well, either overtime, it would depend upon when they dropped in. The, the beauty behind the COPS program, and the beauty behind STAR, and those types of programs, is again, it's a mentoring-type relationship that the police officer has with the youth of our community, trying to recruit them into the department. And recruitment of our youth into our department has always been a big issue, but the more we dismantle some of these programs, the less opportunity we're going to have to connect and recruit the youth of our community into the department.
Well, and that's, and I understand that. That's one of the reasons I asked, what are the numbers of the, the youth that we put in these programs, and then later on, they become officers? That should be very easy to figure out through your HR, and I'm yet to get that number. Because that will help me out. If I see, you know, over the next, last five years, you had like five or six out of twenty, then I would say, fine. But if you had none, then it tells me, while it's a good service, it keeps kids happy, maybe they get a job somewhere else, but to this community, maybe at this point, something that we may want to just kind of suspend for a while, and when we have money, we can go back to. But I need to have that data. I can't make that determination now without the data. The rest of the stuff, as far as the, uh, juvenile investigations, I think that's extremely important. Uh, I do not like to do that. I like to maybe, instead of having two positions, maybe cut it down to one, instead of eliminating it completely. And part of my problem is, when you eliminate this position, the problem doesn't go away. You still have all the problems. All you're going to do is, you're going to take that file, and you're going to put it under another investigation. Now he has more work to do, less time to do it in, and some of these things create problems. That's it. That's, that's basically what I'm at.
All right. I have a question. Are there any other questions or comments while our speakers are up here? Mr. Weaver?
Chief, I'm, I'm still trying to get a handle on this. Sorry, maybe it's early in the morning. Um, you show six sworn to be eliminated in the COPS program. How many of those positions now have a body in them? Five, four? Four? Yeah.
That's the other two that are assigned.
So you have five in there now. So we'd be eliminating five sworn people that are on board now from the program?
Yes, department-wide, we only have seven vacancies of sworn officers.
Understood. I, I know you're shifting, and you're hiring, and, and stuff, but...
The problem that's confusing is, every time we are going to hire someone, it is an entry-level position. Before you can ever get assigned into the COPS program, or to any other areas in the, in the department, you have to be an experienced police officer. So that's where the, the confusion comes from.
Yeah, that's why...
Even though we may carry vacancies in the COPS program, the real number of vacant positions that we have is seven. So when you're cutting positions, you can almost look at those seven positions and say, how many positions are you going to, to cut and eliminate?
In other words, when you get the recruit academy in, they push others up the line, and they backfill at the bottom. Cream rises to the top, so to speak, over time. So we're not, in essence, cutting the program. We're cutting the recruits that allow everything to transpire.
But you are, when you say, and that's why we put this up here, so that there's no mistake, Councilman Weaver, we have, we are making programmatic cuts on the department that will change our service delivery of the department, so that people that we used to assign into the COPS unit, if we cut police officer positions, we will cut that program, and we will no longer deliver that service to the community.
Okay, but warm bodies now, there's five. You said three regular and two over. That, I mean, a backfill, I heard the two of you talking. Is that correct?
Is that, let me see if we can get an answer to that, and then...
For now.
Is that correct?
Currently, we, we have three sworn police officers assigned to COPS, and one community service officer that are carrying out the, the community policing function. So the balance, the seven officer vacancies have now all accumulated in COPS. That's where our sworn officer vacancies are, rather than in, in our essential service line of delivery of patrol, criminal investigations, and traffic. So, so currently, that's, that when you look at our, our department chart, and you see seven officer vacancies, that's where the vacancies are.
So let me go to the city manager, then to Mr. Quintero, and then Mr. Najarian.
Yeah, think, think of it this way, that, that they're down seven positions. Those seven weren't, didn't necessarily originate in COPS. They've originated throughout the department. They pulled seasoned officers out of COPS and assigned them to other operations, those vacancies occurred, so that now you have seven vacancies in the department. They just happened to draw on the people out of COPS to put them into those other areas where officers left.
The discretionary to the...
And, and the idea is, is we have minimum staffing requirements to, to put patrol cars on the street to answer 911 calls. And so we have to maintain those minimums. So when those fall below, rather than allow the vacancies to, to be there, then we'll, we'll look at some of the discretionary services to transfer officers in and maintain that minimum staffing level.
Got you.
What might be way, what, what might be useful from a procedural standpoint, where we, we again are kind of falling into what we did last week, which is getting individual views on what you like or don't like, or support, or don't want to cut. We've got, we've built in $2.3 million in capacity in this budget, by all the various means that we described to you. If we're going to, to be picking programs and saying we want to leave X number of officers, that's going to take away from that $2.3 million, unless we're going to tell the individual departments to keep this program, go cut someplace else.
Well, Mr. Mr. Shaver, I'm, I'm not even ready to go there. I want to wrap up our questions to these two gentlemen, and I want to move to some serious debate amongst the council members. Um, I've sort of made it clear during the week leading up to this, that what I'm looking for at this point is some debate here on these issues. The gap is real, has to come from somewhere, so I'd like to see some serious debate, uh, here between council members, rather than simply question and answer, question and answer, question and answer, question and answer, we don't get anywhere. Ultimately, we have to make some kind of, uh, we have to come to some kind of consensus here on this dais. So let me go back to Mr. Quintero, and then to Mr. Najarian.
Okay, I want to clear up. The Police Athletic League is a national organization. The officers have to be involved in PAL, so it can't be transferred to, to a non, you know, sworn police officer. And then the next point I want to make is, that my experience and thirty years of working with PAL in LA, and here in Glendale, is that they will focus on those kids that are most in need. They're not going to just get some kids that are doing well, they're going to get kids that are in deep trouble. So that, to me, that's what makes it so important. The Explorers is a different situation. There you're finding young men and women who are interested in eventually becoming police officers. So that is a, a sort of approach to try to recruit community, young community members who eventually will go into law enforcement. Those are the numbers that I would find interesting. I'm less interested if they came to work for the Glendale PD, but did they pursue a career in law enforcement, whether with the feds, or state, or, or even, you know, into the military? But PAL is a different program altogether. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what, what that program was about.
Councilman Najarian.
Thanks, Chief. Couple of questions. We're not the, the safest city over 2,000, 200,000, um, because we catch every criminal that commit, that commits a crime. Is that correct? The, the criterion is crimes committed.
Correct.
So I have a problem, I mean, it's definitely a balancing act between the preventative measures on the COPS, and the outreach, and all those other programs, PAL, STAR, versus the ability to investigate a crime, track down the suspect, and make an arrest. So I guess we're, we're talking philosophy, you know, prevention versus apprehension, and the courts have a big role in it too. I mean, if there were one strike and you're out, I think our crime rate would probably drop, because you're just going to be removing the repeat criminals off the streets. So it's really a tough situation. Uh, when you say, when you identify certain, uh, activities as core, I think they're all, they're all core. I mean, preventing crime is almost as important, equally as important as apprehending those that do commit the crimes, the investigation and the apprehension. So it's just a little problem that I'm, I'm having at the moment. But more, more specific, how many officers short are we in the motor program?
Uh, actually, currently, we, we have one motor officer vacancy there. But, but that is due to a, a long-term injury. We have an officer out, uh, on a long-term illness, injury, and, and that created that vacancy.
Will we be five or six short? I mean, we've got eleven, and we need seventeen, eighteen?
We have been historically very short there. Again, largely because it takes time to move people through the process, and get them trained and seasoned enough to be transferred there. However, uh, this past year, we've made great progress, and that's been a priority focus of ours, is to get the Traffic Bureau up to full staffing. We're almost there.
Okay. Let me ask another question. Would a change in our policy, such as, um, such as what, what we see in Los Angeles, not responding to non-injury traffic accidents, have any effect on our budget in terms of the staffing, in terms of overtime, or any of, any of those factors? Would that save us any money? Not responding to, and we've all been in Los Angeles perhaps, you know, you're in an accident, you call the police, anybody injured? No? Just exchange information, and your insurance companies will handle it. In Glendale, we afford the service most of the time to have a, uh, motor officer or patrol unit come in, write the reports, interview the witnesses, and that clearly takes several hours to, to complete that. If we eliminated that function, um, would that result in any savings in this budget that we have?
Councilman Najarian, uh, it wouldn't totally result in a savings. What it would do is enhance, uh, some of your response times to different calls for service, because you wouldn't have those calls in queue any longer. You would simply have your communications operators telling the individuals that call, that we don't respond to those calls for service, which would then prevent them from being in queue with other calls for service, and directing, uh, officers to those particular areas. The traffic officers that go out and handle those types of calls would remain in the enforcement mode, uh, and so it could increase your level of traffic enforcement potentially in the city, because they wouldn't be tied up and distracted by those particular incidents within the city.
We have several products that we sell, uh, as a police department. Police reports, uh, can't get rap sheets, but there's some sort of summary that I think civilians can get from police for immigration purposes or job purposes. Alarm response, the false alarms. Tickets, we issue a lot of tickets. Have we looked at, have you specifically looked at any increase in those fees? Police reports, what, $10 or $15? You know, boosting it to 30, 40? Adding a surcharge on our tickets, and our fines, and our criminal penalties, specifically earmarked for the City of Glendale Police Department? Uh, have we looked at that?
Councilman Najarian, we actually have been trying to study cost recovery modes. We're actually in the process of investigating, potentially bringing forward to you a booking fee that we could recover, uh, as a city, for those that are arrested for criminal offenses and booked. Uh, they'd actually have to reimburse the city for the expense of that. Uh, we did bring in a user fee policy to you about a year ago. We brought to you, uh, kind of a list of all the different fees, and at one time, the, the crime report fees, things like that, were attempted to be kept at a lower level. And the reason for that is, there was concern that if you were the victim of a crime, why add insult to injury by also charging you for the report and that type of thing? So that's why those costs, there was a, a decision by everyone that those costs shouldn't be passed on to a victim, because they've already been victimized, that type of thing. But we are looking for ways to enhance and increase revenues by this attention that we've given to filling our, our traffic spots, and our motor spots. That should directly increase our traffic enforcement revenue that we bring, uh, basically into the city. But more important than the revenue is, it hopefully will enhance the traffic safety that exists within, within our city. And we purposely and intentionally tried to fill those vacancies because of the Americana brand opening and the growth in the downtown area. We need to have those motor positions totally staffed and filled, so that's why we, again, are not letting vacancies occur in those particular areas.
Does, does a motor officer pay for himself? An IRS auditor pays for his salary 10 times over, I've heard. Uh, does a motor officer, in terms of the ticket revenue generated, cover his salary?
Well, we'd probably have to call on our budget analyst, Jay Kreitz, to, to make that estimate. My, my guess, my guess would be that they don't totally pay for themselves the way our parking enforcement officers do. They pay for themselves, you know, multiple times. However, and the only reason that motor officers don't pay for themselves is, is because of the huge amount that is also taken by the state and the county on every penalty assessment for each ticket that they write. So we could certainly, if you're interested, give you an exact analysis of where we believe the break-even point is as far as enforcement and that type of thing, as to, to when they do, how many tickets they would have to write potentially in order to pay for themselves, and so forth.
Do we have quotas for tickets?
No. They can write all they want.
We never limit them.
They generate about $68,000.
No. And, and Councilman Najarian, it would actually be illegal to establish any type of quotas, and I certainly would not want to be any part of that. What I do want is that all of our officers that are out there providing enforcement in the, in the, uh, city enforce the spirit of the law rather than the letter of the law, and, and definitely make sure that the citations they write are for bona fide violations, and that at the time that they're writing those, the intent is to improve and enhance the safety of our city.
Court appearances are paid overtime for officers. Is there any way to streamline with the courts, the appearance of one officer, or a, rather than just make one appearance on a citation, make a, you know, several appearances, perhaps a month worth of appearances for his, his tickets, rather than come back every day, every day, and just keep logging that overtime for time he's just sitting there in the, the jury box, waiting for his case to be called?
Councilmember Najarian, that, that is a very important strategy. Uh, we've worked very closely with the, with the court and the DA to, to streamline as much as possible. Our, our witness lists and, and officers actually subpoenaed to court. We've made some progress with that, and, and I think we've addressed the areas where, where we've got some flexibility to do so. Um, however, I, I think at, at this point, just given the huge machine that the court system is, uh, it's going to continue to, to account for a significant majority of our, our overtime. And I think we're at a point right now where we don't think there's a whole lot more we can do in terms of streamlining that process. Doesn't mean that we haven't looked at that for years, and, and have made some good, good strides, but, but I, I don't know that. I, we're frustrated too, with just the, the volume of, of overtime related to court cases. But I don't know that there's much to be gained, uh, going forward in, in that area without some radical public policy changes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Do we have any other short, very brief, specific questions for these gentlemen? I want to let them go... I want to let them go so that we can get to some debate. We're limited on time. Anyone else?
It'll be just my last call. The issue that Mr. Najarian raised, I've seen in only a few cases in my lifetime, but when I've been there for a traffic violation, like everybody else has been there.
I beg your pardon?
Yeah, well, listen. Let the first person who has not gotten a traffic ticket throw the first stone. I don't see any stones coming, so, thank you. This is what I've observed, is which there are times that you contest a ticket, and the people who contest the ticket, sometimes they go to court and there'll be a police officer there, and the police officer will be sitting in the wings waiting for maybe about two hours just to say, "Yeah, he made an illegal left turn. Okay, pay the ticket." That's it. That's basically what it is. And sometimes we pay overtime for this police officer to be there for that two hours. The question is, is that the best use of a police officer for a left turn? Now, if it wasn't egregious violation, you know, crazy speeding and, you know, driving 100 miles an hour in the street, I can understand that. But when we write a ticket, correct me if I'm wrong, we make what, $10?
It depends on the violation. There's a penalty.
Yeah, we don't make a lot of money. Everybody thinks that we rake in all this cash. We don't. It's very, very small amount. So, for what we take in, for that officer to be there, get paid time and a half for two hours to say, "Yes, he did it," we collect that $10, we spend maybe $150, $200. Those are the type of things I think you can make determinations to say, you know, some of these things is not worth going there. I don't have to tell you that. And, but the big stuff, make a decision, and that's one way you can control some of that overtime. That's it.
Counselman Yusefian, I appreciate your frustration and concern over that. We can be frustrated and concerned with our judicial system as well. The problem is, is that our officers, when they issue a citation like that, are under subpoena. If they don't appear, they're disciplined, and theoretically, they could be held in contempt by the judges at the court. Traditionally, that doesn't happen. If they don't appear, what the judge does is dismiss the citation. However, you would, you might as well discontinue traffic enforcement if it ever was made known to the public that all she had to do is take the traffic citation to court and the officers wouldn't appear because it was a cost-saving measure for the city. Everyone would take their citations to court and we might as well not issue them. So, you have to...
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. What I'm saying is...
General, I really, I have to say, we're talking about parking tickets and the fees from parking.
Moving parking tickets.
I mean, moving violations. I understand the concept. I think the chief understands the concept. I think we do too. We do need to move on. If there are no other questions for these gentlemen, I would like to do that. I thank you, Chief. Thank you, Assistant Chief Pampa. There's a certain amount of this work that only we can do at this point, and we need to get to that. So, let's roll up our sleeves and get out our shovels and our sharp pencils and pencil sharpeners and see what we can do here. One thing I want to find out is I want to see if there is a consensus related to reserves. And, because that is something that has been floated here, and I want to know if there are, if there is a consensus there. If there's not, then we need to look at something else or how we use the reserves. Just one second, Mr. Weaver. So, I'd like to get a view on that. Secondarily, a consensus on taking another look. I think we need to go back to the CIP. I mean, I can count to three just as easily as the newspaper can and the folks in the audience and my colleagues. I had a colleague mention today that he never thought he'd see the day that homeowners would be interested or advocating in cutting back on their own safety assets. Well, pardon me.
Guilty.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm referring to you. However, I also didn't think I'd see the day where we were using a budget study session to vote, and we've done that as well. So, since, since we've broken that sort of time-honored tradition of waiting until we vote to vote and have already telegraphed to every department in this city what the intention is, and since the budget gap is real and the money has to come from somewhere, well, so far, I think I'm all right. Mr. Baruch is out there sort of nodding at me, saying, "Okay, he hasn't made a major blunder yet. Sentence not completed, however, Mr. Baruch." So, let me see if I can get a consensus on reserves and a consensus on returning to the CIP. Let's start with reserves. Mr. Weaver, you had your hand up.
I said last week that I thought we're going to get, dip into the reserves because when you asked me what I think on the police alone, that uses up the $2.5 million that I won't vote to do. So, if you do that, and then you look at all the other departments, we're definitely going into the reserves. I don't plan to stay in the reserves long. I think the councils of the future have to sit and seriously bite the bullet and look at additional revenue sources. We get continually told about our bloated salaries for our workers, but having said in labor negotiations for 12 years now, that's absolutely untrue. We have to be competitive, and we're not driving the train. So, you know, we're going to have to look at additional revenues. We're going to have to educate the public on that. That's not going to happen today, but I don't mind looking short-term at revenues. This is tough times. The economy will turn too. Things are going to be better. So, I see it as a stopgap in part because I won't give up public safety money or positions, and I don't mind looking at the CIP if there's a way to do that.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Starbuck?
Pardon me for weighing in with a notatorial comment. As you weigh dipping into reserves or turning back to the CIP, I would encourage you to send us to go back to look at the CIP.
Well, we're seeing where we have a consensus right now. Mr. Starbuck, you were out of the room at the moment, but that's what we're working on. Mr. Quintera?
Okay. Whether you are a large corporation, a medium-sized company, a small business or a government organization, why do you have reserves? You have reserves so that when the economy is down, when your business is down, you dip into those reserves and you plan ahead so in the coming years, you can backfill those reserves. We've had a tremendous economic boom for the past few years. Now, we're coming into a down cycle, so I think using some of the reserves for CIP purposes are absolutely okay with me. And as the cycle turns, as we get more revenues coming in, we can structurally adjust some of the revenues, but just the overall health of the economy in the couple of years that I think we'll go through this downturn. Eventually, the economy will come back and we'll have the money and we'll be putting it back into reserves.
Okay. Counselman Najarian?
I'm rather hesitant to get into the reserves, I think, because it's, I think the type of thing that once you do, you've opened up the, I don't want to use the Pandora's box, but...
Whoop, you just did.
But you are, that's the hard part. Getting into your reserves the first year are the hard part. In subsequent years, it becomes much easier to do so because you say, "Well, we've done it before." I would much rather take another, my solution to this problem is to combine cost-cutting by some of these programs with a possible transfer from the CIP.
Okay. And Mr. Yusefian? Oh, he's grinning at us folks.
In my opinion, going to your reserves to solve your problem is the worst thing you could do. I have sat in budget hearings while I wasn't in this room, it was in the city manager's conference room, and we have literally balanced our budgets on the back of the CIP and the GWP and the reserves. Do you know why we have 25 more police officers? Because we took $10 million from the reserves. In my opinion, reserves, sometimes you could use the money when you have a one-time cost. One time. You need to take it out instead of using it for ongoing service. All of these are ongoing. You take the money this year for $5 million, you're short next year probably $7 million, and so on and so forth. I am not so quick to jump into the CIP. We have already decimated the CIP for this year to pay for other stuff. We need to take the plunge, do the difficult task, which is, in my opinion, go through this list. Really, there's only two departments that we, the issues. The biggest chunk of money is in two departments. It's in police and fire. We should just go down the line, take votes of which one of these programs we want to cut, the ones that we have three votes to cut, then we cut. The ones that we don't, we don't. And then in the end of the day, department, the city manager will know how many dollars he's short. He can go back and deal with it with the other departments and make a cut. It's as simple as that, in my opinion.
Mr. Quintera?
I want to do both. I mean, that's what we're doing here, and that's what we're going to continue to do the rest of the month, so it's not like I'm foregoing cuts. I'm absolutely into cutting. I've already mentioned what I think I'm comfortable with cutting in terms of police. I'm talking about both.
I think the problem is that I can go through a list, go through a list, but in the long run, it isn't going to change substantially. Those votes aren't going to change substantially from what we've already heard.
Right. It won't be enough.
That is the problem. We have a fundamental difference of opinion on the DIA's, and that's well as it should be. However, I would like to weigh in on the issue also of reserves and CIP. I do not support going into the reserves for operational costs, and I just won't vote for that. I'll never vote for that. I am kind of surprised to a certain degree again because although I'm a relative newcomer to the council, I am by no means a newcomer to this city, and I'm by no means a newcomer to participation in local city government. I've been doing this most of my adult life. I have never heard a council, what am I talking about, standing out there advocating on behalf of citizens? I've never heard this council or any other council advocate the use of reserves for operational costs, operational expenses. I've never heard of such a thing. And I won't support that. I can't support that. The answer to what are reserves for if not to use, when you need them, when things are, when there are reversals and so on, I agree with that. If there are one-time issues, expenses that we have determined are necessary, we went through our CIP study sessions, that can be covered as a one-time expense for improvement that's a CIP item, that is budgeted out over a number of years, next year, the year after, the year after, the year after, where we can use a piece of the reserves, a small piece of reserves, to address some of those in the subsequent years and free up some funds for this, maybe. But I think we have to go back to the reserves at this point. It's not even a matter, for those of you keeping score out there, it's not even a matter of what my personal desires are on this. Part of my job chairing this meeting is to find some consensus. We must move forward, and we have to satisfy a budget. And so, sitting here, readdressing the same issue over and over and over and asking the same questions from the same staff members, expecting that the answers are going to change, is also unrealistic. So, it sounds to me like we do have a consensus to look back, not a unanimous one, but a consensus, to look at the CIP and take a hard look at some of the things there and see what we can do. Now, I have some hands that went up. Let me go to Mr. Weaver, Mr. Quintera, Mr. Yusefian.
Just want to clarify again. Don't take me wrong. I understand I'm not going into the reserves for ongoing expenditures. It's just like when you build something new with capital improvement, a lot of times you're taking on additional ongoing expenditures, M&amp;O. I said, I'm willing to dip into them short-term if the council sits and look at new revenue that will get us back out of that position. Going in to stay in it, you're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor, and the West, will eat those reserves right up. We can't go there. But as Mr. Starbuck said, Mr. Mayor, before you got in here, this city taxes or gets revenue from their residents and businesses less than virtually any city around. They're used to all these services at low cost to them. Now, it's bad times and everybody's complaining, cost of gas, whatever. That's very true, but traditionally, the services this community has been provided have been at low cost to them. And we're going to have to eventually, if not this year, not next year, some year, going to have to realize and educate the public, we're going to have to have to pay more to continue to get these services plus additional services they keep asking for. Nothing is free, so I just want to clarify.
Well, I think, Mr. Weaver, I agree with you, Mr. Weaver, and I think that day is here. It's not one of these years, I agree with you. It's not one of these years. It's now. We also have to take a look at revenue.
Okay, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Quintera?
Yeah, to be clear, I'm not talking about using the general fund revenues. I'm talking about dipping into the CIP reserves. That's where I think we could use a little money and eventually be paid back, whether it's Glendale Water and Power or all of the different funds that do in fact bring money into the city.
... expenses and some of the policy decisions costs. And sometimes we are not told what that cost is until afterwards. Overtime due to additional nighttime meetings in the planning department, we went DRB from 1:00 to 5:00. Nobody told us there will be an additional cost, $33,000. Those are some of the issues that we have to deal with. I mean, in the scheme of things is not, but there's an old saying says, "Every drop at the drop, next thing you know, you're looking at an ocean." So, this is what happens, a little bit here, a little bit there, next thing you know, you're talking real money. So, my opinion is, we've had some consensus on some of these items. Let's go through those, chop off the ones that we can chop off, leave the ones that we can leave, and then in the end of today, we will know what that gap is. Is it 2 million? Is it 3 million? Is it still 5 million? Let's have a de novo hearing today, Mr. Mayor, I would ask you. Let's forget what we said in the past, and let's put our hats on and dig into this, get a number, and if that number doesn't solve it, send it back to the staff, and they can come back looking at CIP or whatever sources they can.
Counselman Najarian?
I agree that we need to go through this, but I have an idea that I'd like to, it's too late for this year. I was in New York City, Manhattan, a couple of weekends ago, and one thing that I, that struck me was the police presence on Fifth Avenue. Fifth Avenue is perhaps, if you haven't been there, it's the signature street of New York City, not unlike Brand Boulevard it is to us. It's as important to New York as Brand is to our city. On every street corner, two or three police officers, and I said, "Wow, how are they affording all these police officers?" And I looked closely, and they weren't exactly police officers per se, they were from the Fifth Avenue BID, Business Improvement District, right on their patches. I don't recall if they were armed or not. I think we need to perhaps address this issue, as I, as we all know, it's too late this budget cycle, but starting early next cycle to see if there's any way in that nature to increase revenues in addition to what the police have listed for their calls and fees and all that. It's, of course, we don't have to have the same type that New York has, but anything that's going to assist and relieve some of the pressure on the police department may give us a benefit next year. So, I would agree that, but back to the pertinent point, I would agree that we just look through, go through this list, see how much, how much is remaining on the table from these proposed cuts, and then, and next... cuts, and then, and next step would be to deal, figure out how we're going to deal and backfill that deficit.
Mr. Starbuck. Sounds to me like we have a, at least, an immediate roadmap. The immediate roadmap is to go through this list, to make the cuts we're going to make, the things we can agree on, find out what that, what that total is deducted from our total need list, so to speak, of funds, and then address, return to the CIP, and see what, what we can return from the CIP, find revenue sources, whether it is supplementing certain public safety services, as my colleague, Mr. Najarian, is suggesting with business improvement districts, or whatever it is, whatever, what other, ever other revenue sources there are, such as have been discussed here and in writing and so on about. So that sounds like where the consensus is. So, yes, Mr. Yusefian?
We're told that the young lady sitting down in front of Mr. Kasachian, after we're done, could give us a tally amount as we go down, so she could tell us what that deficit number is.
All right. We have quick fingers here, don't we? All right. So, yes, Mr. Quintero?
As I mentioned earlier, the cops program to me-
Excuse me, are you getting right into it?
I'm getting right into it.
Okay, we are now officially getting right into it.
Jumping right into it. The cops program, whatever the basic number of officers it would take, whether it's five or six, I wasn't exactly sure what it would take.
Let me just interrupt you one more time. Can you tell us where you are?
At the very top of department reductions in order of amount.
Now, let me, let me suggest we all get on the same page.
Yeah, that's what we're asking right now.
By department or overall?
Yeah. My suggestion would be to turn to the, to the order, the, this one here that says-
Department reductions in order of amount per department. Yes.
Okay, that's a different-
That's this one here. If you turn to page two-
But that's not the one.
-the police department is there.
This is specifically-
Oh, no. Page one is already there.
No.
Oh, you're using the other one?
I'm using the one by department, so you can see all of the police department's-
Okay.
-reductions and the implications on staffing.
Okay.
First four of which are the programs that have been mentioned, cops, SRO, juvenile investigation.
Well, let's start, let's start at the top.
Admin services?
Administrative services. I think it's alphabetical, is that the answer?
So you want, that's the administrative services department.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes.
That's all the same paper. We have several with a heading that say department-
Right.
-reductions.
We're going to start by department.
Yeah.
That we should look at.
Right.
Yeah, let me suggest, Frank, go-
By department, Frank, because it's got them all listed.
Yeah, take this one here. It's by department.
And if you flip to the second page-
Second page is where police is.
And then maybe you start with P for police.
Right. Okay, so I would start with a basic cops program, and I'm not sure that I got the exact number, whether it was five or what it is, it will have a basic cops unit.
Councilmember Quintero, the basic problem-oriented portion of our cops unit is six sworn.
Okay, then six. I'd start with six, with six cops officers, then eliminate the cops full service. I would eliminate the SROs in the middle school, just because I think that's a large amount, 500,000, and I think perhaps there's two SROs in each high school, and maybe one of those officers can kind of try to work the middle schools also.
So your proposal to eliminate how many SRO of the three?
Saying three.
Three?
Or maybe we could keep one to do, to do all the middle schools, but basically cut the SROs in the middle schools. We have two in the, in the high schools. Whether we get down to one that does all middle schools or, but anyway, I'm ready to. Then the juvenile investigation, I do think we need the two juvenile investigators. I would eliminate the TV, community outreach, at 108,000. I would keep the family counseling, because I think that's a very effective tool. I would keep the false alarm.
Let me, let me interject there with the false alarms. That was pulled off of the list at our last session, because that carries more revenue than it costs.
Yeah, it makes more money, right, right.
So you, yeah, the 58,005 should be off the list.
Yeah, I would keep that.
So as we get to this running tally, don't include that.
Yeah, don't include that.
Okay, and then I would not eliminate PAL. I would keep the PAL and the STAR program, both, and the explorers, I guess we could wait to see exactly how many explorers are moving on to, are moving on to become police officers, but overall, I'm, I'm very positive about that one. The security protection detail is the, basically, the guards that we have here. I'm ready to give it up. I don't think, but I'll leave that up to other people. And the citizens' police academy and the public safety academy, I think both of those can, can go.
Okay. Let me move to Mr. Yusefian. Let's look at those same, same-
I'll make it very simple. I concur with every single thing.
All right, Mr. Najarian.
I agree, I would like to, I would like to, however, with the juvenile investigators, I'd like to drop that down to one and see how the investigations are able to proceed this year. I'll keep going down on the security protection detail. I'm in favor of hiring the Hells Angels to provide us with security. And-
Local chapter.
They did that for the Rolling Stones once, I think.
Concert.
Altima. But I'm, no, but in all seriousness, I'm, I'm, I mean, I don't want to cry wolf, but I think we need to look at that perhaps, behind closed doors, in terms of our security analysis of the, of the chambers, et cetera. I forgot what we said about the police academy. I'm not in favor of, I'm in favor of putting that-
Let me, let me read through where we are so far with two council members. And let me just talk about the cuts that have been suggested. The, the, where'd it go?
Full service.
The full service. The-
Middle school.
Middle school.
Right.
The SRO, middle school. The cops, TV, community outreach. The false alarms are already out.
Right.
The citizens' police academy and the public safety academy. And then the, and then the other suggestion was one that you have introduced, Mr. Najarian, which was changing the juvenile investigations from one sworn officer, two sworn officers to one. Okay? Is that about?
That's about it.
Okay.
With a parentheses around the protection detail.
Before we go further, Mr. Yusefian, you're, I want to go back to you related to the, specifically, the juvenile investigations and that suggestion.
I think we should just keep the two.
All right, Mr. Quintero.
Either one. What do you think, chief? How's yours?
My recommendation is to keep it at two. If you reduce it to one, you reduce the effectiveness such to the point where they're only going to handle the most significant priority cases. The other cases are going to go to general detectives, and you won't get the special attention needed to divert pre-delinquent kids out of the system.
All right, let me go, thank you. Let me go to Councilmember Weaver. On those same items, that same section, Mr. Weaver.
Well, I wish I understood the full impact. Obviously, I don't. Not in the department. Cops, no, I won't cut. It's got to stay in.
Which part of it?
The problem-oriented. And where I get queasy on the full service, I don't totally know the impact by eliminating that. I'll go along with my colleagues, but I don't understand what I'm doing by eliminating it, but it is over half a million dollars. Middle school, I hope the SRO from the high school can do it. That's stretching them out pretty much. I just, I hate to do that.
I think it's safe to say we hate to do any of this.
Well, I know, I know, but if I, I told you up what I'm going to support, and it's at least three and a half million.
Right.
So obviously, I'm not going to win on this. But the SRO, I'd still like to see that in, even if you reduce it by one or two, and again, I don't know these impacts. Juvenile investigations to leave in. The PAL and STAR programs, and explorers is $20,000. I can't see taking that out, where it really does, I think, pay dividends. Do they pay enough? I don't know, but 20,000 isn't much out of the total scope of things. Would I answer your questions, Mr. Mayor?
You, you should, there's the-
Yeah, I mean, I mentioned the ones that I'd still support. I don't like taking any of them out, but-
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may just clarify, that the PAL program is done on overtime at the middle school campuses by the middle school SROs. If you take them out, it's going to be very difficult to carry on those PAL programs. Just by way of information.
I'll stay at three.
Well, I'm, I'm, let me, let me just say that, that being the case, we, even with that as the case, I think we're going to have to find a way. We're going to have to look at a different way. Let me, let me join my colleagues and go on the record, so that I can share any slings and/or arrows that may come our way. I'm not going to go through the whole list. Let me just go to the ones that I agree with, the cuts, and those are the full service program, the SRO at the three middle schools, the cops TV, community outreach, the police academy, and the police, the citizens' academy, and the police, the public safety academy. So I will agree on those. It sounds like there is not a consensus on changing the juvenile investigations from two to one. So, that being the case, where do we stand, where do we stand with regard to that section?
So, let me just, that would be yes.
Yes.
The ones eligible for cuts?
Excuse me, one second, there's been a question. Yes, I am. Retain. I only mention the ones that I'm advocating that we eliminate.
Where was the consensus?
So, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
The ones I have would be cops full service.
Right.
SRO, middle schools, cops TV, community outreach, security protection detail, I wasn't quite sure.
No, there is not a consensus on that that I heard.
Wait, 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 I think there's more than three there.
No, I only heard two.
Which one are we talking about?
Eliminating the security-
Eliminating the, eliminating the security protection detail. I didn't hear, I heard Mr. Quintero saying he would leave it to the rest of us. I heard Councilmember Najarian saying he did not want to eliminate that, but perhaps discuss it at a future date.
Well, I was under pressure, Mr. Quintero said, take that out.
I'm ready to take it out. We could draw lots. One of us could get a pistol and a license to carry a concealed weapon. The public would never know who's armed.
Okay, well, I'm just going to go right on the record that I'm not going to carry a pistol.
Neither am I.
And I think that your, my colleague's longevity will benefit from that fact. Mr. Weaver, let me just, let me just gain control of the beginning. Where are you with the, the elimination of security protection detail? In other words, that's the officers that are here in the council chamber.
I did not even mention that in the ones that I would protect. In other words, it has to go, it has to go. When you weigh everything else-
Well, we don't know if it has to go. We want to know what the preference is out of this list. That's how we're forming a consensus.
Out of the preference, take it out.
Okay. And so with one, two-
I'm ready to take it out.
And, yes, Mr. Weaver?
Mike, 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 Mike.
Your mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I only noted two comments. That's the community family counseling.
Keep it.
And for keeping it. I know, two said keep it, I just didn't hear-
No, I'm, I am keeping a tally, so-
Okay.
We'll, we'll get to that. Let's get back to this specific issue. Mr. Yusefian?
Take it out.
And Mr. Najarian, I think, are the two that seem a little, little more reticent. Okay. All right, so, coming back to, to the item at hand, there's a consensus to remove that.
May I be heard on that?
Of course.
I think it's a big mistake to remove that officer. It's $12,000. He's not here just to protect the city council. He's out keeping order in the audience, telling people to turn their cell phones off, inviting them to take seats, explaining to them that they've got to take their issues outside. They've been there to break up heated arguments, both on that side and somewhat closer to the dais. In light of what's happened, I mean, we are living in a very heated, very active city, where we are dealing with millions and millions of dollars of people's livelihood, property rights, speeding issues, quality of life issues. I will strongly object to, I mean, I think we need someone there, and that person is probably the best, I mean, how can you have a, how can we conduct a meeting, week in, week out, and not have any semblance of authority sitting at that corner for just preventative purposes alone? I mean, I'm just, I don't want to bring up other cities where certain other things have happened, but we need an officer there for the decorum of this chamber and for the protection of everyone involved, not just the, the councilman sitting up here.
All right, Councilmember Quintero.
How about, could we do it on an as-needed basis, depending on what's on the agenda, or could we guess out officer to fill the role?
Let me just say that the incident Mr. Najarian was referring to was in a city where there was nothing unusual on the calendar. It was just a fellow who had been there many, many times before, everybody knew him. He was the guy who you always hear the interview about from the next-door neighbor. He was just a quiet guy. Never would have thought it would have happened. Let me just suggest that we include it, that we include it as and part of an eliminate, we include it now as part of an eliminated item. We are in the minority on this, Mr. Najarian. We can address, readdress it, but I want to keep us moving forward, instead of getting into a lot of separate debates.
Okay.
May I ask one general thing?
Yes.
Does eliminate mean eliminate or leave vacant? I mean, some of these-
Means we're taking it out of the budget.
But it, the positions in a lot of these, like police, will remain vacant. By eliminate, you don't mean eliminate the position totally from saying?
Yes. If, let's, any of, any of the programs that has full-time positions assigned to them, if you eliminate it, yes, the position will not be funded in the budget.
One clarification.
And, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment on security council meetings. As I noted, I think at the last meeting when the assignment came out, when I've told the staff, if we don't have a uniformed officer here, I'll expect a manager from the police department here at the council meetings.
All right. What is our number?
Okay, I'll finish going through the elimination, so yes to the security protection detail, yes to the public safety academy, and yes to the citizens' police academy.
Correct.
So your revised programming capacity subtotal would be?
Can you give us a total?
Oh, sorry.
Total on those reductions?
Total on police. Total on police is 1,185,361, which is about a 2.1% reduction in their budget.
Okay, that's the amount of the cut, the remains.
All right, I would like to move on now. Thank you.
So this is what remains, 1.185?
That's the amount of elimination, that's the cut.
That is what we've just cut.
Okay, so how much is left out of that 2.8, then?
1.7.
1.65.
1.6, 1.7.
All right, let us move on. Who wants to?
Fire?
Yes, but where is it?
First page.
The remaining programming capacity is 657,000 out of the 2.3.
Repeat that number, please.
657,000 from the original 2.3.
What I want to know is, we had a 2.815.
Uh-huh.
After we take 1.185, what do we end up with?
The 2.815 is from police.
Right.
Okay.
Minus 1.185.
1,630.
1.657.
1,630.
Let's move to fire, please.
Okay, thank you.
Move fire, please, it's on page one.
1.6 million.
Okay. You're not going to make a suggestion that we bring our own fire hose, are you? You're suggesting we bring our own distance?
I have a question of-
Boy, yes, sir.
Question of the chief. If you remove firefighters, do you remove the recruit academy, too? Do they go hand in hand?
Um, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Weaver, yes, they do go hand in hand.
So, you couple those two together, we go there.
I have a question. Uh, other than, uh, the city of Glendale producing a recruits academy, are there not other places in the region, or other regions, where these are held that we could participate in someone else's academy?
Mr. Mayor, uh, yes, there are other places where recruit academies are held. Um, for example, the community colleges, um, hold recruit training academies at a much lower level, and they teach to the state curriculum. The benefit of us holding our own recruit academy here in Glendale is we teach our recruits what the expectations are here in the Glendale Fire Department. And we have come together with Burbank and Pasadena Fire Departments in a joint venture to do our recruit academies together.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna go back to the exact same pattern. Let's start with Mr. Quintero.
Um, well, I need some more information. So, eliminate six firefighter positions. Um, these would be new firefighters coming into the, uh, coming into the department. Is that what you're talking about?
This would be the reduction of two engine companies to three firefighters on those engine companies, which is times three shifts equals the six firefighters.
Okay. Then cancel recruit academy trainers. This is just the pay for the, uh, for the trainers, right, the 310,000? Or is this also the, uh, well, it's just to pay for the trainers, correct?
Councilman Quintero, this is to pay for the academy trainers as well as the recruits' salaries while they're in the training academy.
This, this will essentially be overtime for those trainers, correct? Backfilling them?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so going back to the original, uh, discussion in terms of overtime and, and so forth, if we don't hire any new people in the coming year, let's say, um, how are you going to be able to handle all of the, uh, needs for the department? I mean, will we continue to see the overtime that we've, uh, incurred in these past couple of years? I mean, one of the reasons for the overtime, I assume, is that we don't have enough firefighters to man the positions.
Councilman Quintero, that is correct. Um, interesting dilemma. We do have a current fire academy taking place as we speak. Last summer, when we came before the council, council gave us clear direction to get all of our spots filled. Um, we hired five that graduated the academy in December of '07. We have 14 recruits in the training academy now. That should fill all of our vacancies and account for, uh, most of our retirements up until the end of 2008. Um, so...
So, that means theoretically, then, the, uh, some of the overtime would go down?
All of the vacancy overtime will go down. All, all the overtime that's for vacant positions in the operations section will go down. But, um, firefighters still will take vacation. They will take sick leave, um, comp leave, and those different types of leave. And in order to staff back to 60 firefighters per day, we backfill behind those firefighters.
Okay. Uh, look, uh, gentlemen, I wanna keep this a direct answer, question-answer. We're not going back to a, a general debate right now.
Okay, well, I would immediately go for eliminating the, uh, fire captain position, the, uh...
Mr. Quintero, where, where is that on this?
Uh, number three down, 198,000. Uh, the emergency services, uh, 198,000. The, uh, public ed, 118. The, uh, uh, overtime, no fringe at 30. I, I don't exactly know what savings from insurance and bonds, I mean, or what that is. Um, eliminate the mail service specialists, uh, the next one down, deputy fire chief to fire battalion 23, and then reorganize the fire prevention bureau, 4,000. Then on the other two, uh, uh, I think canceling the recruit academy, I'm okay with that. But on the first one, I will wait to see what we can do in terms of, uh, some transfers from the CIP before I...
Okay. Mr. Quintero, there's another one in there. Let's, I, two others. Uh, there's the ICIS, the ISIS.
But I, I don't understand exactly why that's there, because it says ICIS to fund, right? So, shouldn't be there.
Uh, Councilman Quintero, that's the ISIS program funding, um, that amount of one of our battalion chief's positions.
It's a gimme.
That's a gimme.
Yeah.
So, that should just be off of there in terms of this discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then insurance and bonds, what do you mean? What's that about? Savings from insurance and bonds?
Yeah, I believe that's, that's if, if you eliminated six firefighters, this is the, uh, surety bonds that go with those. So, if you don't eliminate the firefighters, you don't make this savings. If you do, this, this cost really oughta be rolled up into the cost of the six firefighter positions.
So, they're connected?
They're connected.
All right. All right. Let me go to Councilmember Weaver.
Again, I don't know the impact. Um, I'll go the easy way. The first two are the only ones that I feel strongly about keeping, except if Chevy Chase Canyon is one you live with three firefighters rather than four, has been published in the paper, I'm perfectly willing to cut Chevy Chase Canyon firefighters down, because that is the public sentiment in Chevy Chase Canyon. But on that, I won't cut, uh...
So, moving on to the third item.
Positions or the trainers, the others. I don't, I mean, it's a crapshoot on which ones go or don't go. Um, but those, those two are mandatory for me to keep in.
All right. I, I, what I need to hear from you, though, is not what we're keeping so much as what...
I didn't wanna read seven or eight. I just write first two, all the rest out.
Okay, got it. Uh, Councilmember Najarian?
I, um, let me start with, with number one, eliminating the six firefighter positions. Uh, it, it is my, uh, my strong, uh, position that should any of these cuts, uh, threaten our classification, uh, below a class-one fire department, uh, all bets are off. I reserve the right to put the brakes on any of my decisions. I, what I've heard is that, uh, when we were rated, we had at least one station with three on an engine. We have upgraded our fire flow, uh, capacity, our fire rescue, et cetera. So, this is all based on the, uh, the presumption that, um, that we would not drop a chief.
If, if I can, Councilman Najarian, interject a thought. We did have one station with three firefighters. That was Fire Station 23. But our latter trucks, um, Truck 21, and I think Truck 26 had five personnel on it at that time. So, that accounted for additional staffing in that count that we had on duty during that rating.
Um, therefore, um, and I went to, I had the pleasure of attending the homeowners association, homeowners coordinating council meeting last night, where we had a very vibrant and energetic discussion. You would've been proud, Mr. Draymond.
He was there, too.
Um, uh, Mr. Scoggins, uh, the, the fill pot plan was presented in person. Um, and, uh, I think that I'm willing to go down. I'm not always right. Uh, there's the one time I thought I was wrong. Um, I would like to...
Only what?
I'm joking. That's a joke. Um, I would like to take a half-measure and eliminate only three firefighter positions. And what I've heard also is that, uh, the Chevy Chase station is, uh, suitable to try this as, and in my mind, it's a test project, a pilot project. Uh, in no way do I wanna set a precedent year after year, uh, to see how it works. I, I didn't hear much objections from the, uh, Chevy Chase homeowners representative, both in council last week, uh, and at the homeowners coordinating council meeting. And if it's okay with them, I guess it's okay with me. So, eliminate three of those firefighter positions. And, and I agree to the, uh, elimination of all the other items.
That were mentioned.
All the other items, straight down the list.
Including the recruit academy?
Including the recruit academy.
Give me one moment here, please. Um, okay, let's move on to council. Thank you. Let's move on to Councilmember Usafian.
Um, I was also at the coordinating council. I just wanna let you know. Um, I thought the chief, Scoggins, did fantastically, uh, discussing the issues. Um, Chevy Chase used to be three. I think about three years ago, we changed that, uh, to four. Uh, I am willing to try that back up again. It's not, uh, something we desire, but these are tough times. We have to make some tough decisions.
May, may I ask you a question on that?
So, I would like to go to eliminate three positions.
Three, not six. Okay.
Three instead of six.
All right.
Uh, let, uh, the chief kind of, I like to just do three and let you decide where you want to make those decisions. There may be times that you may have to have four on a fire engine in Chevy Chase, because it's high fire season, or so on and so forth, and then have less somewhere else. I'll let you decide. I'm not gonna micromanage your manning power. I'm not a firefighter. But what I'm, uh, what I'm saying is, I'll give you the opportunity. You make that decision, but just cut three positions, and you rotate it, or do whatever you need to do to, uh, satisfy, uh, the city's needs. And the rest of the stuff, and rest, and you're right, you are going to be by end of this year, you're gonna be full, fully manned?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, the 310 is for future?
Yes.
Okay. So, I am fine with cutting the trainers, and I guess, uh, part of that, uh, bond, maybe half of it, is going to be, have to be kept because of that?
Right.
And that's it?
Okay, so all of the others, you concur?
Yes.
On all of it. Just one moment, Mr. Weaver.
Clarification.
I, I will get you one second here. Okay, yes, Mr. Weaver.
I asked you the question, chief, do the two go hand-in-hand? Now, you just said the trainers are for beyond, not the positions now. So, which is it?
The, the two go hand-in-hand. This funding for, was for future academies to meet our future needs. By the end of 2008, or when this academy graduates, we will be fully staffed.
So, we can or cannot cut that without damaging your full staffing?
We can eliminate this academy without damaging our future, without damaging our staffing, because we're gonna move forward with a different plan.
Okay, then I'll back off my position.
So, what would you like to change, Mr. Weaver?
310 is in, in a cut.
So, 310 comes back in. Okay.
To be cut.
All right. Um, then, yes, Mr. Quintero?
Uh, you made a, a good point, I think. The idea of, uh, doing our own academies, but if, in fact, we need to hire two firefighters, at a certain point in time, people retire, whatever it is, some move on, we could, in fact, do two or three firefighters at one of the community colleges, Mount SAC, or whatever, right? We don't have to wait to do an entire, uh, class ourselves. We could send one or two, or three, for that matter, potential firefighters to another academy.
That hasn't been, um, a topic that we've discussed, but I'll just give you my perspective, because I worked for a period of time at a community college as a fire academy instructor at El Camino College. It's a different level. Um, the expectations are not the same. There's students in that fire academy. They're there to try to learn and absorb as much as they can. When we hire a recruit firefighter, we're hiring a firefighter, not a student, um, trying to get an A in the class. There's, there's a significant difference. The expectation is a lot higher. So, it would not be my recommendation to put any of our firefighters in a community type, community college type of academy.
How about another academy at another city?
The joint academy is a, is a good program that we're running right now with, uh, Burbank and Pasadena Fire Departments. Um, there may be opportunities to put smaller numbers in those academies.
Uh, let me just, uh, also ask before I, uh, do this, uh, Mr. Quintero, it's looking pretty, I just wanna know, with the staffing of the three, okay. Uh, let me say, and just make it very quick then, without going through every single one, every perceivable angle of this from a, an elected position, uh, has already been spoken by one of my colleagues. So, I agree with the, there's now appearing to be a unanimous consensus on this. So, uh, thank you, chief. Let, let's see what our numbers are.
Okay, we're, um, basically then eliminating all but, um, three firefighters, and then half of the savings and insurance. So, our total cut for fire would be 1,489,872.
Or a restoration of roughly $479,000. Michelle?
Exactly.
So, Mr. Mayor, keeping a running tally on the 2.3 million, the PD restoration, I'm calling it, was 1,630,000 from the 2,300,000. The fire department restoration of 479,000, uh, gives us a total of, I think, $181,000 remaining.
One, I'm sorry, one...
177,570 capacity from the 2.3.
Off by 26,000. What's your number, Michelle?
177,570.
Uh, the 2.3 is a surplus that, that we're sitting on. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Michelle, confirm that. We're working from 2.3, right?
But it's not a surplus per se.
It's not a surplus. I'm just calling it capacity.
Budget.
What we've generated.
Unbudgeted.
Uh, we restored 1,630,000 for police. We restored 479,000 for fire.
Right.
So, we have, if we adopt this budget as is, the budget will show in the end of the run, $177,000 and $570 left.
Check your math.
Then we, well, we could add to the other departments if we wanted.
Well, then you'll have a budget that will have absolutely no room for...
Gentlemen, let, let, let's, let's hold on a minute. Ladies and gentlemen, our finance department has just entered the bullpen.
You can play by play.
I'm not a logician. I think we better stop while we're behind.
All right. I wanna get a verification of the numbers, is what I'm looking for, Mr. City Manager. And then I'd like to give an explanation to the public that they can understand.
Okay. The exact programming capacity that we started with is 2,287,379. We've been rounding to the 2.3 million for ease of our discussion. So, our new programming capacity is now, uh, 177,570.
Well, that's what you said earlier.
Right.
Yeah, but she was, was disagreeing with my number. She's correcting me.
Oh, I see. 177. So, all that, just to correct you? Okay. All right. There, maybe we should stop.
All right, so...
While we're ahead.
Excuse me. So, Mr. Uh, Mr. Starbird, uh, in words so clear as to, uh, the eyes, the eyeballs are rolling up here, but in, in, in language so clear as to, uh, explain, uh, this to our viewing audience, if you please recap.
In, in broad, general terms, we presented you with a budget strategy to balance the general fund that implemented roughly 5% program reductions in every department, including fire and police. Uh, you've just gone through the detailed reductions proposed in the fire and police department, uh, essentially, uh, saying no to reductions totaling 1,630,000, what we call restorations in the police department of 1,630,000, and restoring $479,000 in the fire department, uh, leaving you with a projected balance for general fund that you could still utilize for restoring programs or adding new programs of roughly $177,000. So, at this point, we would not have to turn to reserves or the CIP if this is where you stopped.
Now, um, I have, uh, two council members urging me to quit while I'm behind. Um, I, however, uh...
I'd change that.
Yes. However, I, thank you, 'cause I would like to, while we have, uh, at least a half hour ahead of us, talk about a couple of the areas where there was some consensus related to other departments, uh, such as, uh, neighborhood services.
And that's the question, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask, is, on all these numbers, uh, I see there are cuts in community development and housing, uh, and, and none of them happen to be a code enforcement officer being cut.
uh, and, and none of them happen to be a code enforcement officer being cut. Question was, at one point we talked about, currently we have only one point five code enforcement, uh, and we were talking about possibly adding one more. Uh, so how would that work? Where does that come in here?
Well, that.
Somebody explain that one to me.
Madeline or, Madeline and Sam, why don't you come up? Um, and the first item under community development and housing, eliminate one position is not a code enforcement officer, but is a support staff person.
That's correct.
For that program. So I think there was concern expressed when we first went through this, uh, about cutting that support staff position. Then there was interest expressed in possibly restoring some or all of the three code enforcement officers that were eliminated three years ago. Is it three years ago?
That's correct.
Now, none, none of those are provided for in here. This still assumes.
And I want to, my question is very simple. Uh, it's similar to Mr. Yusefian's, I think, if I'm reading him correctly, and that is, uh, what, what will, what will this buy us in terms of code enforcement officers? And I, and what I'm talking about within that department is specifically for that purpose, specifically for that purpose.
Code enforcement, that's what I want to know. Code enforcement, a person who's out there checking stuff. Uh, I'm not talking about somebody's in the office doing paperwork. You send a person out there, what do we, what does it cost us? Sixty-eight thousand? That was the last number, kind of.
It costs a hun, yeah, a hundred and four thousand, five hundred, including benefits.
For, for one?
For one.
Hundred and four thousand?
Five hundred, correct.
Hundred and four thousand, uh, that includes benefits. Uh, now, second question, Mr. Mayor, is that, uh, how many do we have currently that's not, uh, controlled by the CDVG for the rest of the city?
That's a good question. Sam, I'll have to add.
Councilmember Yusefian, members of the city council, there are two that are paid for by CDVG. There are currently two that are paid for, um, by the low mod housing fund. And then there's the one remaining one that's general fund, that's able to rove throughout the city.
Okay, so we have one that goes to other areas of the city that is not in the areas that fall under HUD's requirement. So if I want to send somebody, for example, to, uh, Montrose, I have one person.
That's correct.
Okay, I can't send two people there.
No.
Okay. Uh, Northwest Glendale, it's not in the HUD area, so it's the same guy.
It's the same guy.
Chevy Chase, same guy. Glen Oak Canyon, same guy. Rosmont, same guy. Okay, so I think, Mancito, so I guess I proved my point. I think we should just do at least one, so there's at least two people. Because that's, that's one of those services that we always get calls on. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, my preference will be to at least do, uh, one million, how much did you say? Four thousand?
A hundred and four thousand, five hundred.
Hundred and four thousand. Hundred and four thousand out of that, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So at least we got two for the rest of the city, or we got four everywhere else.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, let me suggest you give Sam just a minute though to talk about the role of the, call it support position that's eliminated in the budget. Because you could have room within the one hundred and seventy-seven thousand for both a code, code enforcement officer and retaining the customer service person that does have an impact on the effectiveness of those people.
And if I might, Mr. Mayor, um, we, we also requested as part of the budget process, an additional twenty-one thousand dollars to cover the benefits for the CDVG, um, funded inspectors. CDVG funded four hundred thousand, which was exactly the same as last year, um, but it doesn't cover the overhead, the benefit increase that goes with those positions. So we're short twenty-one thousand dollars for the CDVG funded positions and benefits. But we just, I mean, the, the budget's very lean and it's all in salaries, so I just wanted to make a note of that.
That was a mouthful. Believe me, if anyone is aware that it's all in salaries and, uh, and it's a lean budget, you're looking at five people who, who agree with you. Um, Mr. Engel?
A couple of things. Let me, uh, add on just a couple of things, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, regarding the CDVG thing. Madeline talked about the twenty-one thousand that, uh, CDVG doesn't fund. This also helps us with the issue of, uh, having a general fund inspector that can use the entire, that can travel to the entire city, because if there's general fund money paying portion of that salary, then they can use that equivalent portion to cover the entire city. So that would go a little bit, so in addition to adding the one, you'd get one, about one point two, another, point two of another inspector that's able to service the entire city and not just in the general fund. I could take twenty percent of that person's time and use them the rest of the city, because those positions are audited. At the end of the year, the feds audit their time sheets to see whether or not we actually sent a, an inspector paid by, um, by CDVG to other parts of the city. And if they had, then I have to go back and reimburse the feds for that, but this actually solves that. Part two of the question is, actually, the first part was, what does the customer service representative do? Um, and I think a number of you, all of you have called neighborhood services. You know, the first line on either the internet, at the counter, or over the phone is the customer service representative. And they take in all the calls and, and any given month, um, the calls that are actually logged total about, um, uh, I don't have it right off the top of my head, but that we average about fifteen hundred separate code enforcement service requests a month, and we're logging in about six thousand calls a week. And we, they're all on the, the call system. In addition to that, we have one person now dedicated exclusively to just the internet stuff. Uh, most of you know that, um, there's a huge, uh, a, a huge increase in the way people communicate with the city. We have one person that just does internet stuff. That's all this person does all day long. Tremendous change in our operation from just three years ago. So those people do, though, they take in the requests, they support what the code enforcement officer does out in the field.
How many people you have like that?
Uh, there are, there are five right now. And then there's a, a senior that does the, all of the internet stuff. So there's six total. And one does the rental housing inspection and schedules the inspectors for rental housing. This is a filled position. The one that's proposed to be.
I, uh, for me, I, I, you know, there's, I think the one, one inspector and do the, the shortage that we have to do, because what we're going to do, we have to pay for it somehow, and so I don't have a problem with that. I, you know, I still like to just stick with elimination of that one position. You know, there's five already there. You know, these are hard times.
We understand.
Okay, just to clarify, that is a filled position, that person would be, not laid off, but would have, we bumped.
Have to be bumped off to another position somewhere else.
Alright, can I get some input on this topic, uh, from my colleagues, so we know where we're going?
What was his position again on that?
Listen, this is a field, this is a field inspector, basically.
The addition of one.
The addition of one, adding one.
Adding one and paid that twenty-one thousand or twenty-six thousand dollars that is short for those four guys. This way we will get one point two people.
I'm for, uh, doing that. I think we need another, uh, code enforcement, uh, person.
Mr. Weaver?
There goes the fat that's left, but based on the calls I receive from the community, wouldn't hurt to have another one out there. And whether that's higher priority and everything else that we're cutting out every other department, I have in the foggiest, but I can go along with that.
Mr. Najarian?
I am not, I am not going to support hiring a field, uh, inspector the same day that I'm cutting police and fire. Uh, you know, what happened to our bloated city budget and all this stuff? We found a little bit of room and now we're ready to, to send it off in salaries and benefits already, so I'm against it.
I am absolutely for it, and it's not that we just found it. This was something we were discussing two weeks ago and three weeks ago and a month ago. Um, you know, I'm not going to sit here, uh, as the mayor and, and try to balance the value between a, a police officer, a firefighter, and a code enforcement, uh, personnel. Or for that matter, someone in Parks and Rec or any other department. Uh, the city has a function and it is partly public safety and it is partly quality of life. And, uh, so, you know, I, I just not going to get pushed into the, uh, the corner of saying, uh, picking, choosing between our children and saying, you know, you know, drown that one and keep the others. It's, it is a lean budget year. Uh, I, I think I've, I've worded it this way in the past. Yes, police and fire are, and, and our emergency medical services, uh, personnel are, are first responders. But we have other kinds of first responders and they have to do with quality of life issues. And, uh, and that's where neighborhood services comes in. They are the first responders there. And increasingly, what is happening is, they can't get any response at all in a short amount of time because there just aren't, isn't the personnel there? It's one guy for the entire city. So I, I do support that. Um, and, uh.
What's our tally?
And that would, that would mean, uh, that our tally will change, so.
Okay, to clarify then, we are leaving the one filled position as an elimination and then we are adding in one code enforcement officer for one hundred and four, five, and twenty-one thousand for point two inspectors. Five hundred.
Plus, plus whatever.
Plus the, is it twenty-one thousand?
Jim, you might want to turn on your microphone.
Plus twenty-one, so what does that bring our tally from a hundred and seventy-seven?
Fifty-two thousand, seventy dollars.
Fifty-two thousand and seventy dollars?
Zero, seven, zero.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir, anyone else we can have?
Uh, I, I would like at this point to put the, uh, protection detail back in for twelve thousand. I'll make Mr. Najarian.
Those are guys.
Well, I mean, we have money.
I had a speaker that wouldn't leave the podium.
I understand that.
It's not making me happy.
No, but now that we have, I mean, twelve thousand dollars, it still gives us forty thousand left over, right? So I'm willing to at this point go to that.
Uh, we have a request. Is there consensus on that? Mr. Weaver, Mr.?
You can cut this budget a hundred different ways. I don't care. I don't need somebody sitting here protecting me, but there's twelve thousand, you want to go there, fine.
Wait a minute, you, when you had Mr. Milano here, uh, two years ago, you brought up, you asked for the officer to help you out, so.
No, wait, no, Mr. Najarian, let's not go there and let's not exaggerate the circle.
The need for this position, Mr. Weaver.
Nobody's going to come in, stand and shoot us. If they are, so be it. Come on.
Don't say anything about shooting.
Instead of, if they're, instead of, uh.
Alright, gentlemen, 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 gentlemen.
Instead of guns, how about knives? How about long, we all have a long.
I think we can safely, I think we can safely say, Mr. Quintero, that, that the long knives, for a certain degree, are always out here on council. However, uh, let's, let's try to elevate the debate here a little bit. Uh, it is a simple question from your chair. It was an honest request, an earnest request. I need consensus from my colleagues. Little less, little more yes and no, little less rhetoric, gentlemen. Um, this is, this particular issue has to do with the restoration of, uh, the, uh, where did it go? What are we calling it?
Security protection.
Security protection. I, I need some answers. You're the only guys who are charged with, with this, so.
Abstain.
Okay, we have one abstention from Mr. Weaver. Yes, Mr. Quintero?
I never got my question answered. Number one, I'm wondering why it's an overtime position. It's one night a week for approximately sometimes three hours, sometimes four. I mean, can't a patrol person do it? Or someone walk over from the?
Councilmember, uh, Quintero, uh, we do it as an overtime detail, so we don't take patrol officers off the street that are needed to answer nine-one-one emergency calls for service. And our patrol staffing is so minimal in this, uh, community anyway, uh, that, uh, we, it is simply not wise to take them off the street.
No one at the station either? That could, no one at the station that could walk over in a normal shift?
You know, in, in, in the evening hours, uh, most of our business officers and offices and functions are, are done for the day. Um, so what we have been doing is, is using one of the community policing officers to come do it on a regular basis. Uh, and, and the benefit there is, is that by doing it on the regular basis, they, they get very familiar with the operation and the players and, and the needs and issues. And that's of value to you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Mr. Quintero?
I'll abstain along with Mr. Weaver.
Very clever and political. Okay, and Mr. Yusefian?
You know what? For twelve thousand dollars, I'm not worried about anybody shooting me. My wife probably be happy about that, but, uh, she's probably has a large insurance on my head. Uh, but I, I think to an extent, uh, we have to also worry about the other people who are here besides us. You know, we're target, that's okay, but the rest of them don't have to. So I don't have a problem. The only thing that I would ask is, sometimes we have two police officers, one sitting in the front, one sitting in the back. And we just have one, you know? One is enough. I, I'm no fool. If the person wants to do us harm, he'll do us harm. I just want to make sure that there's enough time when he turns around, somebody gets him before he does anything to somebody else.
Hey, um, I think Mr. Najarian is already on the record unless you wanted to change your opinion. I think you're on the record.
You want some rhetoric, Mr. Drangle?
No, we've got plenty of that.
Got a little more to give, but I'll pass this down.
Alright.
Well, I'll change, I'll go with, I'll go with, with the security.
Alright, and, uh, and, and I will too. And, uh, I'll just be very blunt about it. Um, I don't know how often this has happened to other council members, but I have been threatened. And, uh, and people do know that within the city. So, um, it wasn't my intention to discuss it publicly, but that has happened on two occasions. So, um, I definitely will go with that. And I'm not just concerned about that. Concerned about the fact that, that this is a public building. And we do the public's business and the, the public is here and it's not always neat and easy and clean. It's, it's often unwieldy and messy. That's part of public administration too, so I, I don't think that that is, uh, out of line. Okay.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Last question. Uh, now that we're done with this and it looks like we're balanced, uh, what's the next step? Do we have to have more study sessions or can we go to?
I'll tell you what the, the next immediate step is. We have, uh, we're going to go to the public because we have at least one speaker card here. And then, uh, we're going to hear about next steps immediately after that. Yes, sir.
I have, I have a, uh, request for Mr. Starbird or the, and the chief. I, I would like to explore this downtown policing unit. For many years, we've had our, um, our outpost at the Galleria and now we've got the Americana. We've got a very active downtown. I'd like to explore how we can receive some reimbursement from General Growth, from, uh, Caruso Affiliated, perhaps from other downtown business entities. I don't know how we do it legally, whether you have to form a, a specific zone, whatever it is. I mean, I think it's time to be reimbursed. Those people at the, the police at the gallery are arresting shoplifters and other things that are going on. So, and that'll be true of the Americana. And I'd like to move in that direction and let's explore.
I would like to ask actually, uh, because I hear a lot of interest in that from your colleagues, is from, uh, Mr. Quintero. I would like to suggest that, uh, as one of the steps in moving forward, uh, is that we, at a later date, have a budget, have a study session on revenue in general. Capture, recapturing revenue and, and, uh, and also new revenue. Uh, that, those are not words that, that, uh, public, a segment of the public likes to hear. I understand that. Um, however, um, as someone, and I can't recall the name, but someone in the staff, uh, was reported to have said, and it's true, we're at a point, we were at a point, are at a point frankly with this budget, where we are cutting not just fat, but some muscle as well. Uh, we must look at that or we are going to be in some serious trouble down the line. And it isn't just about salaries. So I would like to ask Mr. City Manager if, uh, if, after we, I think we need a little bit of a break here from the budget study session or the early morning, uh, meetings. Uh, and then I think we need to come back and, uh, and have a separate report on revenue. We have, uh, some agreement on that?
Yeah.
Okay, good deal. Alright, let's go to the public. All right, let's go to the public. We have one speaker card, Nancy Kent. All right.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale. I believe at the last budget study session, there seemed to be consensus that for the planning department, the idea of cutting the two intern positions was a false savings and not a good idea, because the work would be picked out by people earning a lot more. So I just wanted to clarify if the two intern positions for the planning department have been restored. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, where are we with that?
The answer is no, they haven't been restored. They're shown on the department reductions listing that you have, the four little lines just above police, where you spend a lot of time. Two, the two last ones are eliminating the planning intern positions.
How much we having the tally?
Just shy of 40,000. 39,835.
Well, it could certainly, I'm there, it could certainly, that could certainly, am I reading these lines correctly?
Mm-hmm. Those two intern positions would be roughly 20, $23,000 to $24,000.
Okay, let me, let me ask if we can get a round of answers or comments on that request from the public. Let's just start at the far end. Mr. Weaver.
Well, if we start there, then we go to the next department, the next one, next one. No, we made the cuts. We balanced it based on projection revenue, so, no, every department's going to have to hurt.
All right, Mr. Quintero.
I'm ready to let it stand.
Mr. Najarian, I think...
We decided which child we wanted to save, but I know last week, you mentioned about the periodical and books reduction.
That apparently has been, that apparently has been covered already, though, through libraries.
Just let me tell you how Cindy Clary at our staff meeting Wednesday indicated that if the council's direction was to keep the books, she would cut in other areas. I forget exactly what those were, but she made reductions in other program areas in order to preserve books and periodicals.
These are hourly, hourly?
It's all right. All right, we, oh, you have something, something new, a new message in the bottle.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify, because in order to restore the book budget, we have to cut from hourly, which would mean we would have to reduce our branch hours, each branch hour by three to four hours, so I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Najarian.
I think we're, I want to stop cherry picking at this point, so...
All right, that's fair enough. I'll stay. All right. Okay, I think that, Nancy, I think that's the answer to your question. Obviously, none of us are happy about aspects here. It's not an easy process, but it unfortunately is a necessary one. Let's talk about where we go next.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the slide we put up here is the remaining formal steps in the eventual adoption of a budget. On June 10, you have a public hearing to solicit public input on the budget, and of course, the budget at this point now will be this, this proposed preliminary budget. We have anticipated...
June 10, when?
That's June 10.
What time?
It's your regular council meeting, 6 o'clock.
Okay.
We've anticipated that if needed, there could be additional work at the meeting, special meeting on June 17, but at this point, we wouldn't anticipate needing that. And the preliminary budget would be before you at your regular meeting on June 24 for adoption.
All right, does that answer the question?
The question... Week is on.
No, June 10, we, at this point, wouldn't be needed. You will have the public hearing at your regular 6 o'clock council meeting.
So there will be no morning budget study session on June 10?
Correct. Unless we hear something at the meeting of June 10, and you direct us to come back and take a look at something else, we shouldn't need the June 17 meeting either.
Okay, in which case, we would be hearing from the, from the...
Public.
Public on the evening of June 10.
Correct.
Mr. Weaver.
But we have finance here in case...
Yes.
We start playing with it that evening, where we can again see the impacts immediately.
You'll have everybody at that meeting that's here right now from the staff.
Right. Mr. Yusefian.
I'd like to take this opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to thank my colleagues, Mr. Mayor, for running the meetings, the city manager, and all the department heads. I know it has been a very, very difficult task, but it's something that we do it thankfully once every 10 years, not very often. And I look forward to the following nine years that we won't have to do this. But I want to say thank you very much for providing all the information, and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Hey, I would also like to thank my colleagues for the extra hours. It's not easy, and there's been some very, very long and contentious days, but I thank you for representing all of our constituents and for doing it so well and with such good humor. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some...
We are adjourned.